We didn't, you didn't talk about slips.
A little late, a little late.
All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, November 25th, the time is 6:30 PM, and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order, and we will start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey will not be with us this evening, so Deputy Clerk Cardamom will be assuming the clerk duties. Deputy Clerk Cardamom, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Trustee Cusmano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Trustee Papa.
Here.
Treasurer Jollette.
Here.
Clerk Posey is absent, and Supervisor Viviano.
Here.
Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
No changes.
Is there a motion to approve as presented? So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Dole, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the agenda as presented. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of the bills.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Is there any questions or discussion on the bill run? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Papa, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And that'll take us to approval of the previous meeting's minutes from November 12th. Is there a motion to approve?
Trustee Cusmano makes the motion to approve the minutes of November 12th, 2025. Support.
Is there any question or discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, motion by Trustee Cusmano, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the previous meeting's minutes from November 12th. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, this will take us to public comment. This will be for agenda items only. Anyone who wishes to make public comment may approach the microphone. And I don't see anyone who wishes to make public comments, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent item?
Mr. Chair, move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, well, this will take us to our presentation today. So we have the honor of having a new addition to our sheriff's contingent that is stationed here in Macomb Township. Commander Abrow, would you do the honors of introducing our new officer?
Well, good evening, Macomb Township Board and Supervisor Viviano. Thanks for having us. On behalf of the Macomb County Sheriff's Office, thank you for your continued support, for making this happen. Supervisor Viviano, thank you for your steady support and your commitment to working closely with us to keep Macomb Township safe. We truly appreciate your partnership. We also want to recognize and thank the Macomb Township Board. Recently, you added two deputies here to serve Macomb Township. Your investment directly enhances our ability to protect and to serve. Your ongoing dedication to doing what is right for this community does not go unnoticed. On a lighter note, I just, I want to say something about Treasurer Jollette, for his enthusiasm and his persistence on this initiative. I still remember our conversations and, you know, leading up to the placement, and I'm glad we're here together to share this moment. Tonight, we're honored to introduce the newest member of the K-9 unit, K-9 Coda, who is here with us today. Along with his partner, they'll be signed here to Macomb Township, Deputy Aaron Schmidtler, who has proudly served Macomb County Sheriff's Office since 2011. This addition would not have been possible, though, without the generosity of the Gallo Family Foundation. Their dedication to public safety, along with their ongoing efforts to support individuals and families throughout our community, truly sets them apart. Whether it's helping people in times of need or contributing to initiatives like this one, the Gallo Family Foundation continues to make a meaningful impact, long-lasting impact, on Macomb County. From the men and women of the Sheriff's Office, we extend our deepest gratitude to the Gallo family. Thank you. We are proud to serve this community, and we remain committed to providing the highest level of service and protection. With partners like all of you in this room, we know the future of Macomb Township is bright and in good hands. Thank you for standing with us, and please join me in welcoming K-9 Coda to the team.
So I'm going to come out and officially welcome K-9 Coda in a second, but I first want to say, I want to thank the Gallo family who's here tonight and the Gallo Foundation, Family Foundation, for all that they do, for their support of law enforcement and for the Sheriff's Office. We are thrilled to be able to have K-9 Coda stationed here in the township to service, you know, this part of Macomb County, and I think it's going to be a great asset for the community, so we're very excited. Anybody else want to?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
You can.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, have a real quick question or two. What kind of service does Mr. Coda provide to the department that is an addition? What kind of projects or what kind of law enforcement can he help with?
Sure. I'll let Deputy Schmidtler go through some of his training and what he can and cannot do.
Thank you.
K-9 Coda went through extensive training at the Oakland Community College Training. He's trained in apprehension, tracking, so if we have missing persons, any of that, he's set up to track for them. Business break-ins, all that, he tracks narcotics, he's in narcotics. He's trained in five different narcotics currently, so will be out on routine patrol doing that, and he's further for protection of myself also.
Would it be authorized to, you know, be involved in the schools, helping security there in any way?
Yeah, absolutely. Like my commander said, this dog's for the use of the community. He is trained to search lockers, we were trained in that. We're also trained with our other K-9, he's trained in bomb work and weapons.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a comment, then, what the addition of Coda means to our, our, our community here, to our families here. So that means our, our schools are hopefully be a little bit safer thanks to the generosity of the family, the, and not only that, but, you know, someday there's going to be a lost child that's going to be reunited with his family more quickly. Someday, there's going to be a, a senior with maybe dementia that wanders away, that's going to be reunited more quickly with their family, and that's thank you to the generosity of the Gallo family for helping make the community safer and keep people protected here, along with your department. So I want to extend that appreciation for that addition of safety and security for the families in Macomb Township.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, also same thing, just wanted to thank the Gallo family, thank the Macomb County Sheriff's Office. You know, it's a great asset and a great resource for the community, so we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, if we could, I think we're going to officially swear in K-9 Dakota. All right. K-9 Coda, if you would raise your paw. To you, Coda, solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, the state of Michigan, the laws and ordinance of the Macomb Township, and of course, the rules of the Macomb Township Park, so help me God. He does. I am proud to present you with your badge, and welcome. You guys come around, we'll do a group photo, the Gallo family, board. I'm going to talk to you. So Commander Abrow promised us the mounted unit was going to start after the new year.
We'll pony up for that one.
Took me a second.
You challenged him, so now he feels obligated to come up with new ones.
That was a low blow, I was not ready.
All right, we are going to move on to item number nine. This was postponed from last week's meeting, and it's a request to adopt the 2025-2026 budget amendment resolution. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Support.
Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here tonight requesting an amendment to the fire improvement fund. The expenses need to be increased from $582,450 to $1,795,510. If approved later this evening, this would allow for the down payment on two new fire engines. The engines were in our capital improvement plan for next year, but in order to utilize a prepayment savings option, we will need to have the board approve the amendment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So just again, clarify, these were budgeted items that we anticipated making next year.
Correct.
But we have a savings if we pay half in advance.
Yes.
So we're moving it up to this year, making a budget amendment.
Yeah, to allow for that down payment.
And I do appreciate the fact that Finance Department worked with Treasury to compare both payment options to see which would be most beneficial to township. We didn't want to get hosed by these fire trucks, so we ended up deciding that paying half upfront would give us a better deal.
Don't encourage them.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Leon, thanks for the analogy.
You're welcome.
But I think that's good business. It, it, it means that we're serious about buying equipment, and the people that build that equipment pay attention to that in the future. So I, I think that's a good, I think we're on the right track with that.
Well, the approval of the purchase is a few engine items further in, so we can talk more about those when the chief's up. There's no more questions. We have a motion by Treasurer Jollette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the, or to adopt the 2025-2026 budget amendment resolution. Mr. Cardamom, we call the roll.
Treasurer Jollette.
Yes.
Trustee Oliver.
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano.
Yes.
Trustee Lucido.
Yes.
Trustee Papa.
Yes.
Supervisor Viviano.
Yes, that resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Stacy. Moving on to item 10, is a request to approve an extension of the concessionaire contract at Macomb Coroner's Park to Scoop and Twist. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support. Mr. Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. Parks and Recreation Department's requesting permission to extend our concessionaire contract at Macomb Coroner's Park. In March of 2023, the board awarded a three-year contract to Scoop and Twist. The contract had included a one-time, two-year extension upon mutual consent. Scoop and Twist has run our concessions for a number of years, as well as been a successful business in our township. We're extremely happy with the service they provide, recommending to extend the contract. I've included the contract, the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing department. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Any questions or discussion?
Just a quick question, Mr. Carl, is the, is the amount that they're paying the township increase with inflation, is it the same amount?
It's been the same amount, but the last five years. I, I, truthfully, as we talked last meeting about other things that we have, it's not really a money-making proposition for us, it's more of a service to the youth groups that are out there playing and their family.
So that's why the ice cream contract's been frozen at this amount?
That's exactly right, that's why.
I didn't know we knew this publicly, I thought we're giving a scoop to C and G on this issue, but.
I'm to blame for this, I know.
You are to blame. If there's no more questions, motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the extension of the contract at Macomb Coroner's Park to Scoop and Twist. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the request to approve the purchase of a gable shelter awning from Midstates Recreation in the amount of $100,852. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Mr. Carl.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Parks and Recreation Department's requesting permission to purchase a gable shelter awning for the west entrance of the rec center. Its entrance is used for all elections on election day, as well as the nine-day early voting period. The entrance is also used for our special events such as Easter, Halloween, and the tree lighting. We're recommending the contract to be awarded to Midstates Recreation for $100,852. Midstates Recreation is a participating member of the Aqualis Group Cooperative, has performed work for us for our department. I've included the quote, as well as the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing department. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCaro. So, so just so everyone knows, this is sort of an extension of another project we had already started and is ongoing right now. We have made the effort to remake the west side of the rec center into a functional entrance to the building. We have been using it for a number of years for some of the Parks and Rec special events, and with the uptick in activity, especially due to early voting, we're making a lot of use out of that back entrance. It had a dumpster right in front of it with a dumpster enclosure, which this board approved to move that. That work is progressing, and this is to actually turn that sort of back door into an entrance. This is the rest of the work, and a big chunk of this, which I think is more, a little more than 20,000, is really, is even, is just concrete work that has to get done in order to, to clean up that backside. Correct.
So as a comment, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I know $100,000 seems like a fair amount for a gabled entrance or a, you call it covered pavilion or whatever, but I know the initial estimate was substantially more, and that you then reached out to those companies that make these pre-manufactured units, which saved us over a pavilion dollars. So I appreciate that effort to save us some money.
Yeah, the, the original proposal was from township engineer firms, architect, they helped us create a, a drawing, and then did a cost estimate, and it was $280,000, which was way more than we were budgeted for and that we were ever going to spend. So, yeah, we went a different route, found some pre-manufactured metal buildings that were going to suffice just fine, and that's what we got in front of us today. Now, and all, so to be perfectly transparent, there are two pieces of this that have yet to be done. One is, we have to get an electrician to come out, and we'll probably use the township electrician to do some wiring and to add some lights to it, because it gets dark in November, and we want that to be well lit, and we'll probably have some signage made for that gable end that'll say Township Rec Center, West Entrance. So those, those are not part of this yet. Mr. Chair?
I was just wondering if we had a timeline of when we anticipate starting and finishing?
Yeah, they're, they're going to manufacture it over the winter, and we told them it had to be in by May 1st.
Yeah, May's, I think there's a primary election in May, so.
Yeah, it has to be done and installed by May 1st for the primary.
Is that entrance only going to be used for like special events and early voting? Was there maybe a future to say we could?
So, we, we're looking into that also. I mean, there's obviously a lot of requests at the parking lots right there, and there would be an entrance. The one thing we'd have to do, we'd have to make provisions to let people check in, so we'd have to move the, the rec tract system. So that's, that's not happening yet, but that's something we are looking into.
Would you have to have somebody like stand or be there to monitor?
It'd be like the front door, yeah. Someone would have to come in and, as they swipe their cards to get in, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Anyone else? Hearing none, no more questions. Motion by Trustee Papa, sorted by Trustee Cusmano, to approve the purchase of a gable shelter from Midstates Recreation in the amount of $100,852. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Item 12 is a request for permission to execute a cost hearing agreement for construction costs with Macomb County Department of Roads for the construction of a vehicular and pedestrian bridge along 21 Mile Road over the Salt Slaying Gloadi Drain in the amount of $875,538.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Mr. Van Tifler.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the last few years, the county and the township have been pursuing the replacement of the existing vehicle bridge, as well as the pedestrian bridge on the south side of 21 Mile, just west of Garfield, crosses the Gloadi Drain. Both bridges have reached the end of their real service life, so the township and the county both look for some money to put towards this project. It's roughly $6 million in construction cost. So between the two of us, we've been able to come up with a little more than $4 million, four point, roughly $3 million of that $6 million. So the agreement that's before you tonight is for the county and the township to essentially share in the cost of the rest of the, of the project. So we've reviewed the agreement, it's their standard agreement. There are a couple of things having to do with the funding that are different, but everything seems to be in order, and we are recommending approval.
We have to answer any questions? I know at least some of the funding that was acquired came from Congresswoman McLean's office.
That's correct.
And that was sort of our initial seed money, and that was actually going back a few years now.
Yeah.
And I know we had, ran into a number of complications on this project that made it a little bit more expensive than we perhaps thought it would.
Yeah, we, we do have to relocate some utilities on both sides of the road. We're in the process of acquiring right away at this point, but this is the agreement that will allow us next year to go out to bid, hopefully by the summer, and we'll be under construction.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Just to clarify again, if I may, Mr. Chair, this is a bridge that, the total cost is going to be over $6 million, and our responsibility at this point is $850,000 approximately. That could go up somewhat, but it shouldn't, it's, it's still substantially less than if we hadn't gotten the funds from our Congresswoman and, and help from the county, obviously.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no more questions. Motion by Treasurer Jollette, ordered by Trustee Oliver, to execute cost hearing agreement for the construction costs with the Macomb County Department of Roads for the construction of a vehicular and pedestrian bridge along 21 Mile Road over the Salt Slaying Gloadi Drain in the amount of $875,538. Members, please vote. Crystal, see how much you made me talk there? I'm exhausted. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item 13, is a request to promote a probationary firefighter.
So moved, Mr. Chair?
Support.
Chief?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm recommending approval to promote part-time probationary firefighter Vince Taccone to part-time firefighter. Probationary firefighter Taccone has completed his probationary period with the department and is recommended for promotion by the probationary development committee and myself. If approved, the promotion would be effective November 30th, 2025, and I'd just like to note, under the action requested, that is a typo stating the effective date of November 20th, it would be effective November 30th, 2025.
is gonna be over $6 million, and our responsibility at this point is $850,000 approximately. Could go up somewhat, but it, it shouldn't, it's, it's still substantially less than if we hadn't gotten the funds from our Congresswoman and, and help from the county, obviously.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing no more questions? Motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Trustee Oliver, to execute cost sharing agreement for the construction costs with the McComb County Department of Roads for the construction of a vehicular and pedestrian bridge along 21 Mile Road over the Salt Slaying, Gloaty Drain in the amount of $875,538. Members please vote. Crystal, see how much you made me talk there? I'm exhausted. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on, item 13 is a request to promote a probationary firefighter.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Support.
Chief?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm recommending approval to promote part-time probationary firefighter Vince Taccone to part-time firefighter. Probationary firefighter Taccone has completed his probationary period with the department and is recommended for promotion by the probationary development committee and myself. If approved, the promotion would be effective November 30th, 2025, and I'd just like to note, under the action requested, that is a typo stating the effective date of November 20th, it would be effective November 30th, 2025. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Trustee Papa, to approve the purchase of drying equipment for Station 2 from MES in the amount of $21,687.40. So moved.
Support.
Chief?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval to purchase two KME severe service fire engines from Payette Sales and Service. The two engines will replace the current engines at fire stations one and four. The current engines were new in 2007 and are due for a replacement after 20 years of service. The two engines that are being recommended are very similar to the two engines that were placed into service this past spring. Based on feedback and recommendations from the firefighters, some minor changes to the specifications were made to the proposed engines. Each engine will carry four personnel, that will carry 750 gallons of water, they'll pump 1,500 gallons of water per minute, and be outfitted with the latest in safety and lighting technology. Delivery of the fire engines is 29 months after receipt of the purchase order and signing of the contract. It is estimated delivery will be in May of 2028. Pricing was obtained utilizing a Sourcewell contract that was awarded to KME Fire Apparatus. I've attached the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing department. The purchase of the fire engines, engines is in our capital improvement plan, and funds will come from the fire improvement budget. KME has offered a prepay option of 50%, 50% prepay option, it would result in the savings of $133,186, as you heard just a few minutes ago. If approved, we would pay at the time of order $1,273,460, and at the time of delivery we would pay an additional $1,140,060. I did meet with the Finance Department, the Treasurer's Office, to review the options. It was determined if that money were to be kept within the financial institution, we would generate approximately $94,000 in interest during those 29 months, so therefore the recommendation to utilize the 50% prepay option resulting in a savings of $133,186. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or discussion?
I have one.
Yes.
It's, I, I know that fire engines take a while to, to build and stuff, is this in line with what the usual length of time is, and is there any opportunity that they get it done either quicker, or is there a possibility that it goes longer than, than 29 months? Are they usually pretty spot-on with their deliveries?
Since COVID, this is unfortunately a standard delivery time that the industry is seeing on apparatus, ladder trucks is even longer, heavy rescue vehicles, apparatus are longer delivery time, but the engines are averaging that 26 to 30-month timeframe it seems across the industry, so this falls in there at that 29 month.
But those timelines have definitely been lengthened over the course of the last five years.
Correct, I mean, we, six, seven, eight years ago, we were 12 to 13, 14 months at most.
Yes.
Are we able to sell the two old ones after these new ones come in, or are they like considered out of service, or how does that work?
No, the, the recommendation would be once we take delivery, would be to come back to the board with a recommendation to probably sell one, keep one as a reserve unit, which is what we're currently doing with the two that we just replaced. We have one that was listed for sale, we've kept the other as a spare or reserve apparatus.
Okay.
Are we gonna have that discussion at the next meeting?
At the next meeting, unfortunately.
Thank you.
I won't spoil the surprise. Any other questions or discussion?
Other than to thank the chief for exploring the financing options to save the township some money, so thank you, by, by laddering those payments, we do save, you know, 30 to 50,000, even with the interest, so.
If there's no more questions, or useful comments? Motion by Treasurer Jollet, supported by Trustee Oliver, to purchase two severe service KME fire engines from Payette Sales and Service in the amount of $2,413,306. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And our next item is a request to purchase kitchen and laundry appliances for the fire station number two renovation from Sergeant Appliance in the amount of $10,591.
Trustee Cuzmano makes the motion to approve. Support.
Chief?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to purchase kitchen and laundry appliances for fire station number two. The remodel project is nearing completion, and we are in need of furnishing it with the kitchen and laundry appliances. Three quotes were obtained, I'm recommending Sergeant Appliance, who submitted the lowest quote. Kitchen and laundry appliances were included within the project, and I've attached the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing department. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Sergeant Appliance, I should note, is a locally owned business with locations in McComb Township.
This is like a Black Friday deal?
Maybe.
Okay.
It's also worth pointing out that our friends at Quadrate, who are managing the project, actually were able to negotiate some of this with us and get us, was about a thousand dollar savings.
Correct. Thousand, cheaper than what we had.
Just a question more on the administrative side, as this was part of the, the remodeling of Station 2, shouldn't this have just been a consent agenda item?
Well, it was not part of the quote that the contractor put together, these were, these were a buy-owner item, it's part of the budget, but not part of what we already approved, so as a purchase, we have to approve it.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so it was in our soft costs, the overall, but line item specific, it was
not broken down, which is why we're here.
Gotcha.
We had a few things, same with the drying equipment, and a couple of things that were, you know, in that agreement with the contractor or our buy-owner, things that we were gonna have to fill in the blanks with.
Okay.
If there's no more questions, motion by Cuzmano, supported by Oliver, to approve the purchase of kitchen and laundry appliances for fire station number two from Sergeant in the amount of $10,591. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Let's take us to our second public comment, this is for non-agenda items or any item in particular. If anyone has wishes to make public comment, they may do so now with the microphone. I don't see anyone making a move, so we're gonna move on to board comments. Trustee Lucido.
Just again, want to thank the Gallo family, you know, when people give back to the community like that, and we end up with resources like that, it's just, it's a great thing for our community, and also happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Trustee Papa? Yeah, same here, thank you to the Gallo family, looking forward to seeing Officer Coda in the neighborhood and that. Also, congratulations to Vince Taccone for, on the firefighting staff, and thanks, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Papa. Trustee Oliver?
Kind of same, thank you for the, the family giving us the money for the dog, Coda. Welcome, Coda, and congratulations to firefighter Vince Taccone. And one last thing, if the residents noticed, our clerk has been absent, she did not leave town, she had some surgery, and she is recovering from the surgery, and she's doing fine. That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Cuzmano?
No comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cuzmano. Treasurer Jollet?
There's not much more I can add, other than to appreciate the generosity of the Gallo Family Foundation, and also to wish our residents, our staff, and everybody in, everybody in the top community a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Treasurer Jollet. I wanna echo our thanks to the Gallo family and the Family Foundation, and grateful that they were able to help bring K-9 Coda. I'm just extending it longer.
Leon, you got another comment?
Who's that?
Welcome firefighter Taccone, congratulations on coming off probation. For those of you who didn't see the news, I want to congratulate Captain Bartz and our firefighters from Station 1 and 2 who responded to a family in dire straits, like the, a mother-to-be, his water broke, and they ended up delivering the baby, and as of, as far as I know, chief, the baby and family are healthy and well, and all was successful, and as Captain Bartz said in his interview, it was his career highlight, so congratulations to everybody that performed that service for our, our community members. And finally, we are closed on Thursday for Thanksgiving, and Friday, November 28th, we will reopen on Monday, December 1st, and I'm wishing everybody a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. Be careful on Black Friday.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do we have a meeting before the parade?
We have a meeting next Tuesday.
Okay, so next, okay.
Yes, we have one more meeting, and then we have tree lighting following Friday, and light parade the following Sunday, so we will be back here in one week's time.
Good.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Lucido, to adjourn the meeting. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously, this meeting is adjourned.